I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have anything on a consent agenda I can pull off to anybody else.
Anyone else?
I would move approve of the consent agenda as presented.
I'd like to pull up just to check on the sheet on the St. Croix County stuff.
Okay.
I was curious, the Kenny Road at 2157, is that just a monthly thing for like engineering and stuff or what is it?
It's just engineering, the Kenny and Daley is the engineering for next summer's project.
So every month?
Well, they pretty much lately it's been every month because they're trying to get it to be all the engineering done yet this year.
And same with Daley?
Yes, Kenny and Daley.
And then the sweeping, is that?
That's not all of them.
Is that all of it from one month?
Uh, the dates of the bill are... ...in a moment.
Does it seem to be a lot?
Um...
It's part of my... And the line isn't that matter?
Well, these are only bills through 97.
Okay.
So we still have probably two and a half weeks of invoices yet, so we haven't been billed for almost 30.
The signage is probably all of it running out to check on street signs.
What's the sweeping done?
How much sweeping are we doing? The seal coating, you went back and...
Isn't that part of the seal coating?
No. It's a different, I know, different tool.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm done. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
I hear the second. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I've invited the emergency medical services, department people here tonight. Bridgette is here from the Lakeview ambulance service. And, uh, thank you. Bridgette, I should have said that...
No, you didn't get the September...
Oh, you're right.
I've got September.
You do, and you do.
Excellent.
I should have said to the supervisors too, if you could speak as loud as you can, I know, I know people sitting in the back, it's difficult.
Sure. Yeah, my name's Bridgette Murphy with the operation supervisor with Lakeview EMS. I'm just here to give you guys a rundown of our data for the last four months. So you have in front of you June, July, August, and September. I think for the most part it's pretty self-explanatory. I know our average response time in the contract was nine minutes, 59 seconds, I believe. So the average listed right on the top of each month, looking like we're falling well below that, that timeframe each of the months so far. We did go ahead and highlight the calls that took us over 10, or 10 minutes or greater to respond to, and they correlate pretty well with just a higher mileage to the scene. So those are greater distance calls that are obviously going to take a little bit longer. There's not a ton of them, but, um, a couple of things I did want to point out. I know one kind of point of topic was the work we've been doing or the relationships we've had with St. Croix County Dispatch. And just to update you guys on that, we've been working really closely with the leaders over at their dispatch center. I was actually just over there today for a brief meeting. And the communication with us is getting better. Our crews are all carrying St. Croix radios in the rigs so that we can get the latest information to our crews as soon as possible. We have St. Croix County pagers in the Hudson base as well as our Stillwater base that are tripped anytime there's a call in any of our Wisconsin areas. And we have got, I am responding up and running for all of our staff members. So that's the service that the dispatch center uses to kind of push call information out to the responders. So all of our paramedics have it on their phone, and that's the first thing that gets tripped in the system. So sometimes those I am responding messages will come in a minute or two before St. Croix County even dispatched the call. So our crews are getting a jump on the calls before they even are aired to the St. Croix County responders. So that's helped a lot in decreasing that lake time that we were, that we were concerned about in the beginning. So that's been really good. The other thing I wanted to note is, I had mentioned before the meeting, but just as an update, so on September 9th, we moved into the space, the space that St. Croix EMS was using in the basement of City Hall as well as the fire department downtown. That's a temporary housing for us because Hudson Hospital is doing an expansion or remodel on their emergency department, and they no longer have the space for our one crew there, let alone now, since the 9th, we've had two crews, two ambulances over here with four paramedics. So the housing downtown is temporary until our building is completed, which is supposed to be in March. So they are breaking ground this week. And hopefully as long as everything stays on schedule, we'll be moving in there in the spring, and then we'll be back located up next to the hospital. So since we moved downtown in September on the 9th, you can see on the September report, our response time was increased a little bit from the previous months. And that is likely just because of, well, because of two things. Obviously downtown is farther away from the township here, so it takes a little bit longer to get here. So I guess a little comfort in that, once we get moved back up to our permanent location of the hospital, that should drop down again. And the second piece of that is just simply that the ambulance is housed across the street in the fire station, and the crews are housed in City Hall. So just the added time it takes them to get across the street and into the truck, it just adds, you know, some seconds. So hopefully that'll all be washed back out once we're in our permanent space. So, um, do you guys have any questions on any of these, any specific calls or on anything that we're doing?
Two questions.
Yeah.
One is, who's in dynamic deployment or not?
We are.
Okay, because when you said you're coming from across the street.
Oh, the sleepy City Hall, you walk across.
Yeah, the paramedics themselves, the space that they are living in is in, is in City Hall, but the ambulances are parked in the fire station.
So you are leaving from there, you're not sitting in the ambulance all the time?
Correct, yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. And then the next one was, Phil Holmes asked at the fire crisis report meeting how the first responders were going, and I said, good. Is that still true?
That is still true. So the first responders we had in Hudson Township have still been coming on calls with us.
Roughly how many calls, percentage wise, 40, 60?
I would say, yeah, I would say over half, for sure.
Over half, okay.
It depends on, I think, the time of date and the acuity level of the call. So a call that...
How is that differentiated in that, that page off to the first responders so that they know what it is, or do they just hear the call?
So they'll get the address, and they'll get the nature of the patient or the complaint. So a breathing problem, or a chest pain, or a fall, or something like that. So that gives them an idea of what type of call it is. And then dispatch also codes, they have kind of a flow chart that they work through, which gives a code to each call, which indicates a severity level. So if you've heard that before, it's A, B, C, D, or E, or Alpha, Bravo, Delta, Charlie, Delta, and Echo. And so Echo level calls are, are like unknown life status, like a patient isn't breathing. So those are the highest security calls, where an Alpha level call would be maybe someone that just fell and isn't really injured, but they can't get up on their own. So we're sending some help out to them, so.
And then Phil indicated that the city was still using the police department until January 1st. Do you know if they're going to use the first responders from Lakeview after the first year? Do you have any idea at all?
The talks that we've had right now have been pretty preliminary, I think just because everyone's getting settled with everything. Our goal is to come up with a first responder program that matches something similar to what you guys have, or maybe a joint group or something for the whole area would be a better way to share resources. But we haven't finalized anything like that.
Are your first responders going to North Hudson or not?
Uh, the police officers are responding with us.
North Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Great, that's all I have.
Yeah.
What's the timeline on your news station at the hospital?
So we are, they are scheduled actually to move, start moving there tomorrow, I believe, the 2nd. I don't know if that's going to happen because of all the rain and the weather, but for sure this week, if not, for sure next week, if not the end of this week, is when we're starting to work on things. We've been meeting with the contractors weekly with updates and just planning, stuff like that. And then it's scheduled to be done by the end of March.
In March, okay. I suppose you're guessing you're going to have better response times once you get up there.
Right. So the proximity to the freeway is huge, you know, as soon as you can get out there, you can get places really fast.
Sure.
As opposed to kind of the traffic that you'd see in the, in the pedestrian traffic and the, and the road system that's downtown that usually slows, slows us down a little bit.
Okay, all right. Anything else? For the people in the audience, we've got information from June, July, August, and September. The calls for each month were 18 calls, 19 calls, 23 and 21, which is fairly consistent. And the response times were always between under 10 minutes, the response times are eight minutes and 15 seconds, seven minutes and 42, seven minutes and 50, eight minutes and 43. So I'm not a statistician, but I'd say it's a pretty tight number. So, thank you, Bridgette.
Yeah, thank you guys.
We'll see you in three months.
Sounds good.
Okay, committee reports?
Fire, this will take just a little bit. We haven't met for a while. The budget numbers are going up 12%, mostly because of the building cost of, it's two and a half to three times larger than what the existing fire hall is. Plus, we're going to be running out of cost for two halls for about six months because they're dissipated, moving in July 1 of 2020. It's got pushed out a little bit because the port, I see the concrete out by the street, they should have all the walls tipped up in the next two to three weeks, but you won't see much happen after that. It's behind Applebee's, if you don't know where it is, because you're going to be doing all the contractor stuff inside the building in the next several months. And then the reason it's pushing out, the contractor didn't want to pour the concrete slab for the aprons until next spring because they need 30 days guaranteed that it won't freeze, and they can't be guaranteed of that. So they want to wait till March to pour the aprons. So anticipation right now is they'll move in July 1st. The city would like a 20-year rolling contract from us versus the five-year rolling contract we've had previously. And what they're going to do is it would roll for 20 years, for the first 15, and then go back to a five-year rolling contract in 2035, so that during the period of the 20 years of the bond for the building, we'll be committed to staying with them. There's no reason we would want to leave anyway. They will not charge us rent for the facility. Just, they want to know if we got a commitment? They would just want to know if the board is willing to commit to that 20-year rolling contract. I would assume they would, but I said I'd run it by you guys to make sure you're in agreement with that. Do you want...
Have they put together any budget for us with or without the...
The rent would probably be significant, would be significant.
Yeah.
If you paid rent.
Right.
So I don't think you, because Troy wanted to see the rent numbers, and I said, I think you guys are nuts, because it would be a big...
They're not, I mean, they're not charging us rent. Why would you want to see rent numbers? Right, that's right. We just want to...
Because they're not charging us any. How they prepared for materials that are being used in the building.
Right, which we've always done.
Which we've done, plus we use, but Jeff Johnson had complained just viciously for years that we had paid for depreciation on the old building all 20 years, and at the end, we got nothing left of that building, and there's, so there's no salvage value. We just lost it all. And his point was, that's not right. You guys end up with the building and the land, and we get nothing left out of that deal. And so that was his complaint. And so the new administrator and his fire chief and Bill Holmes sat down and pounded it out with the mayor and decided that they could do this as long as we got a 20-year commitment for the period that the bond is being paid off, that we're still going to be here and not going anywhere.
Yeah, that's kind of a no-brainer out there.
I agree.
Anyone would ask him about rent crazy.
I didn't understand.
Zero dollars or?
Yeah.
10,000 a month?
Because, well, the only reason Troy...
If you're lucky, it's 10,000 a month.
Yeah.
Be more mad.
No sense.
So let me, let me ask my question a different way then. Do they have any budget numbers, what it would be for us going into this contract that they're proposing?
12%.
12% increase.
Okay.
Because roughly, we don't have the exact numbers yet.
He said originally it was 10.5, and then the administrator was at our meeting, because we'd requested in both, we meet both the finance director and the administrator, because we felt that all the budget numbers got pushed out significantly further in the year, including, we didn't get a contract till mid-year, and so with him on the top contracts, I said, that's probably not a good thing to bring up right now, because we didn't get a new contract for 2019 until July.
I should have the budget numbers in the middle of October, or bend down October.
Right.
We'll have them before our budget, so...
So we're meeting October 24th at 8:00 a.m., and we should have the numbers then, for sure.
Okay.
The EMS, one of the EMS chase vehicles is going over to the fire department, and it's going to be used by the vehicle duty officer so that they can arrive on the scene early. They do quite often. And the other chase vehicle is going to the police department, which we have no use from. So when we're requesting reimbursement for the ambulances, we should request the chase vehicle that's being used by the police department. I don't think that the fire department, we need to worry about it. But I just thought I'd bring it up. The other thing that Scott brought up was in 2021, they'll probably have to request an additional duty officer because the volumes of guns keep going up. And that's it. Because I already mentioned, I already mentioned that the first responders were going to be at the police department until January 1st of 2020. Bill didn't know when that was going to happen.
How many ambulances are they have? Two now? Or three?
Three.
Three. And then one extra chase vehicle that's going to, I know the one's going to fire, but we work with fire, to the police.
Right.
And they haven't suggested giving us a reimbursement yet.
Oh, no, no.
No, absolutely not.
So are we going to get the value of those?
Are we going to...
Well, it's, it's on the agenda on the 18th, so...
Okay.
When we get down there.
So you do that until October 24th or just passive discussions?
Well, you need to know if he can tell you that the 20-year contract is fine.
Right, I just need to know before that.
Generally, the board's in support of...
Support, support of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I hear here. And I will let them know.
Okay, you're going to let them know tomorrow?
Yes. Anything else on fire?
Nope, that's it.
Library?
Mary, I see you're here. Any... I can say a few things. See, it's coming the end of the year. I know Paul Burning spoke last month, I think, and brought everybody up to speed on a couple of things. But the library director's, you know, grading report that's coming in, so we'll basically give her however her grade is. And I know that they're asking for a 2% budget increase. I guess I'd like to, you know, caution the board that it's a rolling three-year average now, so if you throw in 2% now, it's going to continue to raise the three-year average. So throw that in as caution. And then the last thing that I just really don't understand, and I certainly am not in agreement with, is they passed another negative budget, taking 40 to 60,000 dollars out of reserve, and on top of it, they're opening an extra hour every day. So they, I just think they, that they need to move one direction or the other. I'd like to see if the budget under control.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Wisconsin Towns Association, I haven't received their notice yet, but generally we meet the end of October, so that should be coming up soon. Chairman's report. I'd received a request from Supervisor Yaku to ask to talk about some of the roads. I just want to combine chairman's report and roads, and it's going to be a little bit different tonight. September, we had a lot of calls, a lot of emails flying around with respect to burning down houses, to crosswalks, to you name it. And I wanted to go back to open meeting laws and discussions on the electronic devices. This is from the May 19th, Wisconsin Department of Justice. I'm going to take just two minutes and read this tonight, and that's going to be the context of my report. But I want to make sure that we talk about this publicly, because this is something we all have to deal with, with texts, phone calls, and emails. It has to do with electronic communications, and it's been my understanding, my response to this, that these are getting more frequent. Receive more discussion items, more opinions, and more "I agree with" responses in these emails that the public doesn't get to see. This is what, this is what the opinion says, and I think it's good for all of us to listen to it. It says, "Written communications transmitted by electronic means such as email, instant messaging, blogging, or other social media may constitute a convening of members, depending on how the communication medium is used. Although no Wisconsin court has applied the open meetings law to these kinds of electronic communications, it is likely that the courts will try to determine whether the communications in question are more like an in-person discussion, for example, a rapid back-and-forth exchange of viewpoints among multiple members, or more like non-electronic written correspondence, which generally does not raise open meeting law concerns. If the communications closely resemble an in-person discussion, then they may constitute a meeting if they involve enough members to control an action by the body. In addressing these questions, courts are likely to consider such factors as the following: one, the number of participants involved in the communications; two, the number of communications regarding the subject; three, the timeframe within which the electronic communications occurred; and four, the extent of the conversation-like interactions reflected in the communications. Because the applicability of the open meeting law to such electronic communication depends on the particular way in which a specific message technology is used, these technologies create special dangers for governmental officials trying to comply with the law. Although two members of a governmental body larger than four members may generally discuss the body's business without violating the open meetings law, features like forward and reply to all, common and electronic mail programs deprive a sender of control over the number and the identity of recipients, who eventually may have access to the sender's message. Moreover, it is quite possible that through the use of electronic mail, a quorum of a governmental body may receive information on a subject within the body's jurisdiction in an almost real-time basis, just as they would receive it in a physical gathering of members. Inadvertent violations of the open meeting laws through the use of electronic communications can be reduced if electronic mail is used principally to transmit information one way to a body's membership, if the originator of the message reminds recipients to reply only to the originator, if at all, and if message recipients are scrupulous about minimizing the content and the distribution of their replies. Nevertheless, because of the absence of judicial guidance on the subject, and because electronic mail creates a risk that it will be used to carry on private debate and private discussions on matters that belong in public meetings subject to public scrutiny. The Attorney General's Office strongly discourages the members of every governmental body from using electronic mail to communicate about issues within the body's realm of authority. Members of a governmental body may not decide matters by email voting, even if the result of vote is later ratified at a properly noted meeting." So I just wanted to remind us all as to what these electronic communications mean and what we're seeing. And I've tried to respond to a couple of them, and I think it just spirals from there as to what my words mean, and I want to remind us what they are. So that's, that's the extent of my chairman's report. The road report, I want to give Mary, she had two concerns that she wanted to ask me about tonight, and then I want to keep this brief. So what were your concerns with the roads?
I'll just read my email.
Go ahead.
Since you're worried about the meeting laws, and it's all questions, and there was no scheduling. I'm just catching up on my emails now, a few things I'd like placed on the next agenda. Sweeping the roads, I'd like to know who authorized this? Why was it not brought to the board to discuss? Last I checked, we don't, last I checked, we don't sweep roads. Also, how are we paying for this? We do not have the aligned budget for, for this, which is very concerning to me. I believe there's 14 miles of road that was swept, that was authorized by, I assume just you. I have the same concern with crosswalk bid. Again, why are these being authorized without board vote? How much did it cost us to have the country, the county go out and bid on crosswalks, but again, we don't paint like that? Steve Hermsen's illegal driveway. It is not removed, if it's not removed prior to, or if Brian Wordhead stated that we will then contract with the county to have them take care of the problem for us. I want us to be able to take action, if needed, at the actuarial meeting, as this needs to be taken care of and rectified before the snow flies, and the tactic will have to be adjusted as an assessment on its property tax. That was my email that you just decided to save was an illegal open meeting law email?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm saying I've received it from many, many different supervisors.
So, and I don't believe there was a response to it by anyone, so...
Probably not.
So, and if there was, it might have been one person, I don't even know. So those are my concerns. Why, why are the roads being swept?
We don't, we don't know respond to it, it's not, it's not a lock-in forum.
So why are, why are, why were the road, why was 14 miles of road swept? How much is that costing us, and where's the money coming from? And why did we go out to bid for crosswalks when we don't do crosswalks?
Okay, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna answer those individually, because we're not gonna, this isn't on the agenda.
You asked me the question, I'm giving you the...
You're repeating, you're repeating what you just went through.
Well, yeah, I was just making sure.
The first issue is, I did not authorize anyone to sweep any roads, ever.
So how did 14 miles of road start getting swept?
Well, it's 9.6 miles of road.
Great, how did 10 miles of road get swept?
Because you authorized it with us, what that's called chip sealing, and we put the chips down on top of the hot bitumen so that it adheres to it. We let it sit there all summer, and it was swept up. That was not sweeping the roads, that was part of our chip sealing program, that's part of our budget.
Okay, but that's not how I'm understanding it, but that's...
Well, that's, that's why I'm here to say, I'm not going to be responding to all of these emails, we're going to talk about this in a public forum.
Right, but you don't let us.
Well, we do.
You just got to say, we're only going to talk about this briefly, so you have to send an email to get a conversation.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying that I'm accommodating this under the road report, and we can put this on the next agenda item, and all of these should go on the agenda item so we can talk about them, not the way that I have to respond through these emails.
I requested that they go on the agenda. My email said, I would like this on the agenda.
And I responded to you, it was too late. It was too late to go on the agenda, and I would see if we could accommodate that through the road report.
Great.
Are you, no, no, I'm, this, no, this isn't, no.
I'd like to add some...
No, I'm going to respond to this quickly, and then we're going to see if we can, we open this up. There was no sweeping of the roads, authorized or unauthorized, that I did, ever. It wasn't 14 miles, it was 9.6 miles of roads we approved for our chip sealing, and they swept up about six miles of the roads. Now, the other issue has to do with emails and Dorwin Road. I met with the county with respect to Dorwin Road, and there was concerns about whether or not that crosswalk needed to be striped. My question for them was that it's adjacent to a county road, it's adjacent to the middle school, and would they meet me out there? They met me out there, and I asked them to send me an email because I didn't want a verbal quote. I asked them, this is very important, I'm going to take this one minute on this. We, and for the people in the audience, we receive these emails, that people say, oh my God, I'm going to get killed on this road. Oh my goodness, people are going to get killed if this isn't taken care of. Now, we had one on the south side, which was, which was on County Road N, where the lady said people would get killed if the tree wasn't immediately cut down, trimmed back. We had another woman concerned about the kids getting hit on Dorwin Road if it... We had another woman concerned about the kids getting hit on Dorwin Road if it wasn't striped. I met the county on Dorwin Road. I don't think it should be striped. I met the county there, and they said, "You know, if you're going to stripe this, you probably have to do Martin and Shaveck because it's part of the paths." I said, "Who does that?" We outsigned the striping, and I came back to the town board and said, "I won't even approve the striping, nor did the town board approve it to do Trump Brook, which I think is a hazard." And they said, "We do that entirely within our purview. Would you like a quote?" I said, "Yeah, give me a quote. Okay, I'll call you." I said, "No, tell you what, send it to me." Now, I'm going to talk about this in a public forum. Because that email was sent to me. I didn't know it was copied to the clerk. I didn't see it immediately. It said it was for $1,800, which included three crosswalks, not one. And the clerk sent it on to the rest of the board members and didn't copy me. And you guys had a conversation with respect to whether or not you thought that was an appropriate bill. And I'm simply saying what I've said before. If I'm soliciting information from the county that I want to put on the agenda so that we can legitimately talk about this on the agenda, then that information should not be copied to the clerk, who I was told called the county and said, "Copy me on all of this information." Excuse me. Then sent on to the rest of the board members, and it included everybody but me. And you had conversations about it.
I forwarded... It came to you and me, and I just forwarded it off because you already had it. And I asked you to put it on the agenda, and you said, "No."
I said, "Oh, listen."
We've spent far too much time on this.
We have. We have.
And I will admit, you should not personally get information without going to the clerk, Tom. Should not. And the reason I say that is that's what got Tom Spaniel in trouble in St. Joe. He had everything going to him, and the clerk was not allowed to share with the rest of the board. Bad practice.
I've had nothing but good practices, and I stand in front of God and come from heart tonight.
That's all I'm telling you.
And they're all on here, including everything on here tonight.
You said she should have never gotten a copy of it.
I said that the clerk should have let me know that you want a copy of it. I would have given her a copy of it.
Everything that you get should go to the clerk, too.
Okay.
That's under the board.
That we're going to let this go tonight. But I'm going to put these on the agenda continuously because I... Just so the board knows. I have one other thing to say on this. When I ask the clerk to send stuff and copy you guys and copy me, it's a hit-or-miss proposition. And I even put in there, "Please copy the board and copy me." And the last thing, in addition to this, I've sent it out to Castle de Calvo on the extension of the possible appeal of their law case. I don't, A, I don't know if it goes out, B, I don't see it, and I don't get copied on. So there's a dual discussion to be had here that I would just like to say...
If you're going to do that, you're having to look at the clerk you're not here.
Well, I...
Well, there's no reason we don't have to sit and listen to that.
Nope, nope, I'm done, so I'm moving on.
But in reference to your comment...
He's done.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, an FYI comes out. An FYI should not be commented on by board members. Because, again, it's an open meeting issue. These opinions should be saved for me. I agree with that.
You know, it's interesting because all we're trying to do is keep things transparent in a situation where we feel like things aren't being transparent. And that's why I asked for it to be on the agenda. If it didn't make this agenda, fine. But if it's not going to make this agenda, then don't start talking about it and bringing it to everyone's attention and say you're going to cut it off and make us look like shit.
Well, phone calls are not transparent.
All right, we're going to have a different way of interacting for the next meeting. I'll tell you that, so...
Okay.
I'm just saying, we've had these discussions before. And as the chair, I'm just going to make sure that it's more transparent than you could ever imagine. And that includes the things that you say in the emails to me.
Perfect.
Good.
Print the mail for everyone. Anyone is welcome to request...
Public comment.
I'm not a public comment, I'm a supervisor. I'm in this position. I have a vote just as equal as you. Anybody is welcome to open meeting law. Anybody is welcome to request any of our emails. So please do, if you want our emails, request them. There's no decisions being made. Except from one person, without the board's acknowledgement.
Public comments, anyone who wants to speak on any items not on the agenda? Yes?
Mary, what did you find out about that?
So I called them, and they said that they've... This is what they're saying to me. I'm just a messenger, okay? They said they redid the corner four times. They said the last time they were there, you kicked them off the property.
They... I told them, I said, "I had enough, and I want it fixed." And I do. I think they took a picture. My wife said it looked like somebody was out there taking pictures. Well, they put a round straw berm up there, threw sand behind it, and a net over the front. Well, all the net did is cover the ditches underneath. And this is the fourth time it's been done. And it's not right at all. Not at all. And this has been over a year and a half now.
They said they recognize that there's been a lot of complaints. So Bonnet Telecom contracts this out, right? Obviously, you can tell, it's QOS or QL, I guess. Yeah. And they are recognizing that there's been a lot of complaints and that the project did not go as planned. In fact, it's exact words, the project went south. And they're working, they've been working to clean up the mess all over town. They've already invested... I couldn't believe when I heard this because our bills are going to be jacked up. They already invested $8 million on this project. And obviously, they're going to have to invest more to clean up the town as far as... You're not the only one out there who's having an issue.
I see.
So...
Will it get cleaned up before winter, or...?
I'm not... I don't think it will. Because they're over in my neighborhood now, and we're in a new neighborhood. So I don't know why it's not already out there. It was sent to my house fiber optic when we built. So I don't know how it didn't happen to all the homes there. So, yeah, I don't think they're going to get done with this for... I think you're going to be looking in the next summer, if not, well, the way it sounds like. So they're way behind schedule, partly because of the weather. And partly because residents are supposed to get told before they're going to be on their properties, and somehow residents aren't being told. Whoever's dropping a ball over there is dropping it big time, which means residents kicked them off their properties, which is delaying them and they have to go back to their properties. And so this whole project has been very ill-communicated, and they're working very hard. He's called me like four times since I told him. So they're working to get it all cleaned up. I can't make any promises to you, and I don't think they can either. It's just going to be in time, if, hopefully.
Power company dug a hole in mine, bought Ford Man Foxhole for gas across the road, and they just left it. And geez, I had a hell of a mess there. And finally, I just got fed up, and I wanted to make a complaint to the Better Business Bureau. Where to get them? I had no idea, so I went down to the corner down the second where the city has. And she said, "They don't want any trouble." And she called XL Energy. They had an outfit come out of Forest Lake, where they've done a fine job of fixing it up. That wasn't any problem. But this is a major deal for something that's very minor.
Yeah, he keeps saying that because you're in the cor... He's not abstaining. He's said that because you're in the corner, it's continually getting ripped up by the work they're doing on other homes. I don't know why that would happen, obviously.
They do a whole freeway out here. Look at the masses they do.
Right.
No problem.
Yes, so that's all I got for you.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
I keep on them. Keep on them, just keep calling them. Man, I don't know. I see them all over town. I see them inside of homes. I see them over here. They're all over.
Okay, anyone else have a public comment? Yes, Mary?
I guess this is a very generic statement. It's very generalized, so take it for what it's worth. It's an opinion of mine. But I just wanted to let, with 60% of the board, you know, newer... You know, 23 years ago, I moved into this town. There's reasons why people move here. There's a lot of different reasons why people do. The town has grown a lot, I understand, and there's a lot of different maneuvers that the town board makes to try to satisfy everybody. And I constantly reference, there's one phone call here, one there. You know, that I certainly get and understand. But what I'd like to speak to the board about just in general is just go forward. You know, when you're making decisions, realize that there are people that are here for a particular reason, and there's other people that want to make it into something. And you have to keep in mind that people, while they're here, you'd like to keep it, you know, to suit them and not change it, because then that forces them out. So as you talk about, you know, I noticed there's a couple special meetings for subdivisions, this and that. You know, I think 15, 18 years ago, I came and talked, and we were talking about nuisance ordinances. A lot of that stuff can be reserved for neighborhoods and subdivisions. They can do that themselves, you know, covenants and restrictions. But I just, you know, would like to ask the town board to just think about that one-size-fits-all isn't always the best solution to satisfy a small problem. And so just try to keep individuals individuals and try to keep neighborhoods neighborhoods, and don't try to include the township in everything as a total because it really affects everybody to do that. Each neighborhood does have an opportunity to design it the way they want to if they can get a majority of people to do so. It's always an option they have. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, discussion and action on Eagle Storage Stormwater Management Agreement. You probably want to fill us on that, huh?
I read it, I don't see the issue. Eagle Storage Long-Term Stormwater Management Operation for I-83, you want it to roll?
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just to go after Tom, Chair.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion's carried. Okay. Next is discussion and action on amending the intoxicated liquor ordinance 52-4.
We're required by law to do this, and it's not in our ordinance to allow me to do it, so... Someone came in, wanted a provisional, and I couldn't give it to them. But it was the day before the board meeting, so I just had them do their regular operator license, but...
That's like these church programs.
No, provisional is if I would give them their regular... They need their regular operator license, but it's a couple days before the board meeting, or the board meeting was tonight. They come in tomorrow. It would be good until the next board meeting, as long as they've already taken their class and all that. But we're required by law to do it. But because you don't have it in the ordinance that I can sign off on it, then we have to wait for a board meeting which defeats state law.
So we need to put it in the ordinance?
Right. So I just got the...
I would move approval of putting 52.4 in Chapter 52 of the intoxicated liquor anywhere.
Your second to that? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Next is discussion and action on amending the cable television...
Did everybody say aye?
Yes.
Discussion and action on amending the cable television ordinance 27-12.
Would you move approval?
We are here, second to that. Your second to Tib's motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, your none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion's carried. I need a blank pen for later. Next is Steven Smart, 622 Alice Circle for second driveway.
Hello, is there a address? I wanted to put a shed up on our property. It's been a goal of ours for quite a while. To have it come off our driveway that goes right to our home, just isn't... It's not aesthetically attractive, and so I was wanting to put in a new driveway to provide access to the shed. You've got a couple pictures there, and you can see, probably this one is better describes what it looks like for our plan to put the driveway in the shed. At least it's pretty approximate. So I'm asking for approval for that. The reason we're not coming off our own driveway is that what doesn't show in the picture on this one is I've got a great big maple tree sitting in front of the house. And so maybe that would be just to take away the aesthetic value. I have no hardship. I understand that I have to have hardship if that's part of the requirements. All I have is just a request for the permission of this thing.
You know, I see you live on a cul-de-sac.
Yes.
Have you discussed with your neighbors, your plans and so forth? And what kind of feedback are you getting?
They're all acceptable, yes. So, yeah, they are.
Okay.
And so we're a close-knit group, and we want to make sure... I want to make sure that what we do is acceptable to our neighbors, too.
I got a question. Yes, sir. Two things. Are you having to take any trees out to do that driveway? I couldn't tell when I looked at it today.
Well, so we have a set of popple trees that are dying. And so I'm willing to sacrifice those anyway for the driveway.
Okay, so they are going to come up. Then the second one was, it looks kind of low down there. Are you going to have to put your shed up a little bit so it doesn't...
So I had Henry Digital come out. Are you familiar with him? He's a well-known excavator, and he suggested I put it up the hill a little farther than down at the bottoms. So we're looking at that.
I just was curious because we're having some water issues, and I looked at it, and I... It's going downhill, and it looks like a low area, and you just...
It is. It is. It's the most isolated, but at least I left up the hill a little ways.
Okay.
That was it for me. Any questions?
So then bringing it up the hill, then that still allows for standard setback, or...? I would move approval of second driveway for Steven Smart at 622 Alice Circle as presented.
And there's a second? And is there a dimension on that from his current driveway?
Yes, there is.
Would you consider putting that as your...
As presented.
You did for this, Brian.
It's on this one.
I think those are pretty approximate, but they'll be close.
Right, I agree. Right. We just don't want you putting it on the other side.
No, sir.
We take this, Brian.
We have a motion and a second, is any further discussion?
There's a second.
Dan?
Yes. I'll just add another comment because I know that there's, you know, some discussion in terms of closeness of driveways, in terms of safety, and stuff like that. This is on cul-de-sac, I don't think that it's that big of a deal. But I guess my, you know, I don't know how much we've quantified, you know, our criteria. But, you know, I did ask the question as far as how the neighbors receive it, and I think that's really important. I think a big part of the whole thing is, you know, relationships with your neighbors.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I appreciate that. And I think that's kind of, you know, it comes right down to it. And that's a very critical thing because the whole... The purpose of so many of these things is essentially, you know, that we don't infringe upon, you know, one another's rights and so forth. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. All right, next is discussion and action on group, a groupy concept of the country road in Long Island family. Yes, gentlemen?
If you were below, this would be an opportunity to use this project for some... If you were below, this would be an opportunity to use this project or subdivision as a starting point for the change with the county, as well as how the future review should be going. And the reason I'm saying that is that the change that took place in May with the county involves subdivision and the review as to the process with the town and the county. And some of the things that they are no longer required to make the decisions on for the preliminary plat review, this is your opportunity now as a concept review to make those decisions on and give the county some direction. And those standards of going into place, like regulating the size of the cul-de-sacs, the public roads that are involved, any dead-end issues, private roads within the town, and any design or layout requirements, including road location, construction standards, connection to other roads, the length and the frontage on public roads and et cetera. And in this, in, like I say, in this instance here, as a concept, normally the planning commission and town board have not made motions, but if there are issues of something other than the standard code, then the town board should probably make an actual motion so that the county gets that information, so that they know how to direct their review and whether it meets with, so that it meets with the town board's desire. Couple of things with that, is that as presently stands, the county code has not been changed, so you could make a motion to have them meet specifications of the county code as it is, or, and/or you could make it meet the standard specifications of the county, and/or if there's some special circumstances, because you've already, I'm assuming already have read through the county specifications, so if there's something that's different from those that you don't meet, then that's what the town board should make a motion in the direction on to give to the county for the continued review.
Liz, just as a point of information, have you seen the county's response to this, that they sent?
Do you see?
September thirteenth?
No. Okay, so they were, they were able to do, because I was also told that they were going to continue the town's process until the first of the year.
Right.
But I wanted to point out that this is an area that would...
Right, well, I think we're all universally concerned, because the end of the year is coming very quickly.
Correct.
So I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, and this is an opportune one, because it's from the start.
I'd give you my copy of this right now.
Oh, that's okay, I can get it later, no problem.
You guys will have it.
Okay.
Thank you, Liz, anything else you wanted to say, maybe your comments are well taken.
No, no, I just, I just wanted to point that out, that this is a perfect opportunity to put it into effect as to our review that we've been doing with the subdivision ordinance, the change in policy from the county that was started in May, but technically is not taking over until January, which, this is one of the areas that will be a change in the process, that the town board needs to give direction to the county for them in order to do preliminary plat.
All right, for the benefit of the audience, we saw your presentation at the planning commission, but please go through it from start to finish with us tonight.
Sure, so I'm Ty Dodge, I'm the surveyor on the project. Got large format map here, got a couple of the eleven-by-seventeens, I think the ones you have are probably smaller, and a little more...
Oh, eleven-by-seventeens? I don't have any.
Only got two on hand, there's not...
I think I should take those.
We've got a larger format map here.
Thanks.
You probably could have asked them to throw it away.
So this is a property owned by Jamie Groupie, it's at the corner of One Hundredth and Cushing and Alexander, about a hundred acres, basically, on Shank Lake. And what we're looking at is running a roadway through from Alexander up to Moon Glow, where there was a temporary cul-de-sac terminated probably fifteen, twenty years ago, I think. So we've got a, got a township spec road that's slated to be a town road, and I'm running through the property, that's about thirty-nine-hundred feet of road, is what I have listed on here. Twenty-two lots, three-acre lot average, excluding the water. Yep, two-and-a-half acre average, with minimum lot size of two acres out here. We've got two lots that have come off of One Hundred, lots one and two, and then all the rest of the lots have come off the new township road that we're going to be putting in. Thirteen and fourteen, or lot fourteen, I should say, I want to set up for an access easement. That's one of those items that the county has, the county has road frontage requirements, and with them deferring that to the town, we have a sixty-six-foot access easement as shown, so that'd be one of those points to discuss. That planning commission has received acceptable, but that would be just something to clarify as we move forward, if the town's going to be on board with access easements or requiring road frontages. Other than that, I think we've got potentially a common access on the north end of Shank Lake for the property owners. That's kind of a flux, it may change in location, may change in use. There was an access that the owner was going to retain off One Hundred Street that was scrapped. And right now, that's, that's the basic synopsis of what we have going on. I think again, planning commission, a couple of things were brought up. One was flood elevation for Shank Lake, which, that's probably something that we'll be calculating when we get to preliminary plat. The county letter was asking about an overflow from the lake and how that would be calculated. Those are all issues I think we'd address as we move along. I don't see, I don't see that we're going to have issues with getting lots to conform based on the elevations out there, but we'll have to go through the engineering calculations to get to that.
And obviously, you've seen Jeff Dirkie's comments from the highway department and Sarah Morell's from the community development.
Yep, we received their comments, and I'm not sure, I need clarification probably from Mr. Dirkie, because he had sketched on here maybe a little wider area than what I have shown for vision triangle, potentially.
Yes.
If that's true, then that won't be a problem.
Says extra right-of-way and clearing required.
Right.
Because it's on the inside of a curve.
Yep, and so, I mean, there'll be specifications there, we'll just have to work out with Jeff.
Will Alexander be straight down a little bit more, or not come in at an angle like that?
Yep, Alexander will bring that in so it's a T-intersection.
Yep.
More radial to that curve. So however that curve gets redesigned, then that end of Alexander will come in straight and be a four-way straight across to our new roadway.
Good.
Let's see what else we have. Well advisory was one issue that was brought up. The south two forty-eight acre parcels of this, which basically encompasses lots one, two, three through eight, and eighteen to twenty-two are in that well advisory area from the landfill. It doesn't, you know, it's not a huge issue, it's just casing requirements when they put those wells in, so it's something we'd show on the plat, but it's not, it's not a, you know, doesn't kill lots, doesn't kill development, it's just some precaution that you take in. Yep, that'll be noted.
Okay.
Joint driveway on one and two have to come in at a ninety-degree intersection?
Yes, yep, that was another Jeff Dirkie comment, that he wants to see a joint driveway on lots one and two at that ninety degrees. Again, that's, you know, the county, county has said they can't dictate those things to the township, but if you follow...
We control the joint driveways in our working session.
Yeah.
Because they create nothing but problems.
They're not creating...
Is it, can you not, there's no other way you can have those two lots without a joint driveway?
Uh, we proposed it with single driveways, but Jeff was not on board with that, and backup lies on One Hundred, that's probably his reasoning, that limiting access is better. There's some merit to that, but like Tim said, joint driveways are almost always a sticky wicket, and who maintains it, who takes care of it, those kind of things can be difficult.
Is that the only joint driveway?
Um, hopefully, hopefully we would be able to get lots. The only other potential joint driveway would be lot thirteen and fourteen, at the very north end. The hope would be that we can meet at least a hundred-foot separations up there.
Will you get rid of that access then?
The sixty-six-foot access?
Yeah.
Uh, what we would probably have to do in that case would be make that sixty-six-foot ownership of lot fourteen.
Okay.
And have it as a panhandle type block.
Fourteen is thirteen.
Fourteen, fourteen.
Yep.
That's a driveway for fourteen. Is that also the access to the lake, if we agree?
Yes. Now, the one issue that presents is if we give that sixty-six foot to lot fourteen, we don't meet the county requirement for a hundred-and-seventy-foot lot width on lot twelve.
That's what I was just thinking about, I just thought that's small, is that much?
I mean, we could have that access easement and another driveway for lot thirteen in there, as long as the township is acceptable to an access easement. Comments from St. Craig County, since you guys have that, we can address some of those items.
One thing we haven't discussed, which we did a lot of, we haven't done a lot of that tie in the last few years, because there just hasn't been a lot of new stuff coming in, Jeff, was future town road planning. There is a lot of land to the west of that.
Yes.
We probably should have, they mentioned in the letter, an access road, because it wouldn't be very long.
Right here.
You know, to get to that land to the west.
Probably between lot seventeen and eighteen is the logical spot. And that's actually probably top of the gravel, which is one of the better spots anyway.
Okay.
So I don't think, you know...
And I'm not opposed to not building it, just dedicate the land to the sixty-six-foot easement, and have the future...
Future town road.
...pay for putting it in.
Correct.
So that could be dedicated, but not built, left out for...
Because every, every time we build them, they, if they don't get built right of way, blacktop goes to heck anyway, or I bother to build them.
And the only thing that I've, my experience on that, if we're in their grading, it makes sense to grade out to the, to subbase, so that the neighbors are aware that a road is going to be there at some point. If there's drainage, it's, it's addressed, so you just grade it to subbase, you don't put down the gravel, you don't put down the blacktop, you have it...
Cedar ready is done that way, years and years and years ago, all of those were the sand lift.
Yep, right.
It's called Mustang Drive at that time, and I couldn't keep that sign there.
Wilder.
Is it Wilder?
Well, it was Mustang.
I thought saying Wilder, it was Mustang, Cedar, yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's something, that's a good point, we'd probably bring up in preliminary plat, is design it, and then build it to subgrade, you know, everything would work, it gets seeded back in, somebody has to come in to finish it, maybe they're scraping off a little bit of black dirt to put it down to gravel, and if there's no good, we'll just make sure it's yellow. See if there's anything else on this town letter, anyone has questions on them? I think most of the items are just, you would get comments.
Why is the access to the lake where it is?
Uh, that was where Mr. Groupie had suggested we put it, and...
That makes it the longest distance.
Yeah, we talked about that, that's, that's to be determined, yes. I think if you go all the way across this property, it might just be, you know, maybe between lot nine and ten was discussed, now I'm doing kind of in the middle.
Yeah, okay, that was just the initial, initial thought.
So I'm just curious, how deep is that lake?
It's a good question.
Do you have to keep fish? Like you said, there's perch in there and bass now, so...
Now, a few years ago, it was probably this deep.
It's as deep as it's ever been.
Right.
It was pretty much dried up.
I'd say maybe twelve feet.
So that reads as springs?
Yep, that's what I think reads as a spring bed, yep.
So it doesn't, doesn't exit, does it?
No, no. That's straight.
So it's a bowl?
It's a bowl.
So then we calculate...
So we're creating, no, we're creating all kinds of runoff, runoff, so it does have that potential for being a perch lake, a shell lake, where they just keep, if it doesn't dry up, they just keep rolling.
Yep. It would be interesting to see what the elevation of this lake is versus Twin Lakes, to see if they're on the same water table.
It's a good question.
That'd be pretty easy to tell, I mean, that's something I can...
It's just an elevation thing, just to see if it's on the same elevation water table. My pond is, and it's higher than it's ever been. I don't know what's going to happen.
This is eight eighty-seven.
Hmm?
This is eight eighty-seven according to that letter.
Oh, I think Twin Lakes is higher than that. I think they're closer to... I want to say it's closer.
I didn't put an elevation on that.
I want to see it's closer to a thousand.
I've asked Tammy about Robert's sewer system dumping all that water into there. Years and years ago, we had a proposal to put a truck wash down by the truck wash, and I said, you better check this, the ground's frozen for five months out of the year. I didn't see him for about nine months, and I came back and said, well, what'd you find out with your engineering studies? He said, the pond would actually grow throughout the year, because we don't get enough evaporation for that five years, and five months it's frozen, it would, it would, evaporary pond would not have worked. And I got a feeling Roberts keeps dumping water into that lake with their sewer system, they just keep adding to it, and then it freezes for part of the year, and they keep adding water, and no place to go, and they don't evaporate enough to do that.
Well, we've got the wettest gear in Robert, too.
Yeah, the OHWM was set in nineteen ninety-nine, eight eighty-seven point nine.
And once we get out of field survey, we'll be able to see where the water location is.
The DNR doesn't have a depth on record.
Not that I don't know.
No, I just looked, there's no depth on record with the DNR.
Probably not, a lot of these small ponds, lakes, they...
They got to acreage, though, you figure they'd go in and...
Yep, so it's easy to get to acreage, just go in the area and draw it, or actually go measure depth, you know, but we'll be able to see from nineteen ninety-nine historically compared to what it is now, and then we'll calculate. The way we do that is a hundred-year storm, which is, I think, a seven-inch rain on frozen ground condition, two of those, and then go four feet above it, so, okay, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty solid margin of safety, you know, okay? If those houses are underwater, then there's probably a boat going by with animals two by two.
Okay, any others of questions you can add? What we're talking about?
Got to look at it, because that creates problems with the lot size. And Dirkie said every place that they've done easements in the county, they create nothing but problems. Easement comes back...
Access by easement.
Access by easement comes back to bite you, in variable sense. And we just don't have any, the town, so we don't have any reference to...
Oh, we do, which is causing a problem. Golden Oaks, and then there's another one, too, that, you know, it's all good and dandy at the beginning, but then, when the next owners come in, then pretty soon everybody starts questioning whether or not...
Really hard to sell a woman there's an access by easement. I mean, a new bill isn't as hard to sell, but we have to sell it ten years down the line, fifteen years.
That must be why they have trouble later on.
And my experience has been, single access easements usually aren't as much of a problem. Joint driveways, and then when you start getting private roads with three, four, or five people, and maintenance issues, that's when you're in problems. You know, single access... You know, a single access where if there was a driveway built here, and a driveway a hundred feet away is separate from the other lot, usually those don't bring up nearly as many issues. There's still potential there because somebody else owns the land you're driving on, but it's not, not as bad. I mean, situation specifically, makes sense overall. Probably more in every lot, but situation, but sometimes they do make sense.
Okay. See what you can do to correct that.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing that I see on this letter, um, that the county brought up is, they're noting a storm pond, uh, which would be on lot fifty-two of Tanny Ridge. That's up in that Moon Glow development on the west side of Moon Glow Road. They say there's a high water elevation of nine twelve that may impact lot fifteen. Pond on lot fifty-two may need maintenance to reestablish stormwater capacity to original design. Unfortunately, that's not on our property, so there's nothing we can do about that. So, if the town wanted to investigate that, investigate it with the Tanny Ridge, they could. Uh, my feeling is that when we lay out the design for lot fifteen, we would just take into account wherever that storm pond wetland is at now, calculate a new LBO for our development, and move forward from there. Not making any assumptions that anything would happen to clean that or, or increase its capacity. Just deal with it as it is and go high enough that it isn't a problem.
We have to look and see if we have access to fifty-two.
And the other, the other factor that comes into that is, the DNR has that identified as a potential wetland now too, so there's a whole other level of permitting if you start diving into that, which, you know...
Is that lot lived on?
Yep, there's a house right in front of where that storm area is.
But that's the problem, because it was a stormwater, it wasn't maintained. That's why we have these stormwater maintenance agreements now, so that we can go in and, as they fill in, all the trees, all the whatever, and pretty soon it becomes...
How would you notify them? Have they been notified at all about any of this? Probably not.
Not at this point. When we get preliminary plating, are we sending out notification letters to all the joint landowners?
Well, no, I know, but this seems to be a little, the stormwater issues. This situation seems to be a little more concerning than, you know, because it's essentially, because it's... Hmm?
That could be resolved.
Well, my concern is, it's got to be resolved on their dime, or, which is what we're trying to avoid by fixing all this other stuff, but, so... That's... I don't even want to touch that one, but that's what's... I'm not knocking on that door.
And ultimately for us, you know, if that was a concern, I don't know exactly when Moon Glow and Tanny Ridge was developed, I think it was probably fifteen...
Ninety-six, ninety-five.
Yeah, close to ninety-six.
So, we're twenty years...
No.
Twenty years plus ago when that was done. I don't even know that I would trust the stormwater calculations. I think we would redo those anyways for the strange area.
Sam would have been doing the stormwater calculation.
I'm sure Sam did that in the kitchen table.
This last development was done by Klowa.
This last one?
No, was it?
This, this, the one to the north was the north.
No.
You sure?
Not Moon Glow.
Not on Moon Glow.
Yeah.
And that's all Sam.
Where was Klowa's?
Over Apple Moon Beam, probably.
Yes. Oh, I've got the big one.
No, it was Moon Beam.
Yeah.
He was, when he connected Moon Beam and Moon Beam West. This is Moon Glow.
Right, yep, and, and, yeah.
Same.
From our standpoint, with lot fifteen, um, I think we would look at it, we would analyze that and see if that elevation still makes sense, um, and build on lot fifteen accordingly. If we have to put a building pad or drainage ditch or size of cover for the driveway that crosses it, we would just plan on doing that without upsetting the apple cart and going into the neighbor's yard and digging the big hole, or they would be extremely unhappy with us, so that's probably what it's pushing. I think that, that pretty much summarizes what I have on county letter and the town conference room before.
Okay, we have a lot of agenda items to tie, so any other important comments you have for us?
To make our motion, what we want to do with this, so we can let the county know what we're doing.
I think we made the motions and the protests.
Liz, just explain to them what they want to know, though. We have to tell them that we want them to enforce it.
Yeah, my understanding is, is that, like I say, is with the new policy of the county, in order for them to proceed with the preliminary platting view prior to us any taking action on the preliminary platting view, that we normally wait for their, their comments. So, what they would be looking at at this point is, is like number one, where you discussed lot thirteen and fourteen, is it okay with the town board that they have access to lot fourteen through a private easement? Is that okay with the town board, or are you going to require that?
Road frontage.
Lot fourteen have road frontage, and it may have to change a configuration for twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. It may only be two lots, because you don't have enough room for distance between access ones. That's one issue that they would probably want direction on. The second would be that you're okay with the joint driveway. Uh, obviously, it's the recommendation of the highway department who's doing the review, but it still is an access point on a public road, um, and that you're okay with that joint driveway for lot two and three.
One hundred.
And, I'm sorry.
One and two.
Two.
One and two, what is, okay.
Yeah, the joint driveway on one hundredth is one and two.
And, okay, and then, um, oh, I see, it's three point four acres, okay. The other one, the third issue is, there's a note here of a sixty-six foot lake access easement retained by the platter off of the Hunter Street, whether or not the town board is okay with that.
And that moves the eliminated, plant commission, I talked to Jamie, that's gone, so...
Okay, so you're not...
That access on one hundredth is gone.
So, sixty-six foot lake access easement on one hundredth is gone.
Yep. Comfortable and very, uh, well, I mean, yes.
But going, going back to the thirteen, fourteen.
Yep.
Is that, that, that launch or that, that access there, is that, that's for everybody in the subdivision, right?
Correct.
So, who maintains that?
Association.
So, so the association would maintain it all the way from Moon Glow down to the lake?
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially.
Well, yeah, I guess so.
And part of that's probably going to be a residential driveway. That's where, you know, in discussion with Mike...
That's going to be a huge problem, right?
Well, then that's, that would be another issue that the county...
That's my concern.
That's why you probably want to move the lake access between, I don't know, twelve and eleven, or ten and nine.
That's kind of overhead, honestly. So, then you can fix that, tie it hard, delete all the requirements for it.
And I think that's, that's perfectly acceptable if you say that the lake access should come directly off public road frontage. And then we can pick which one, once we...
Yeah, there's kind of a short one right here that it wouldn't take, you know what I mean? If you could configure this other section a little bit.
Would that sixty-six foot a, um, access easement on Hunter Street, with that going away, you still can't separate that driveway, huh? I mean, did just say that, yeah, did just say that, would that access still in play there, or...
No, I think that...
That wasn't relevant.
That probably wasn't relevant.
The joint driveway's going to have to be there just because you can't eat separation because of the intersection and the curves and whatnot. So, it's got to be a joint driveway.
It's a, it's considered a collector's, so that'd be five hundred feet.
Right.
Or not two hundred.
Right.
Four hundred, five hundred.
Yes.
The five hundred. Five hundred for separation is the reason.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just put those together.
Well, right when you get past there's the curve, so then it...
Well, if that's going to get straightened out, it'll be right.
No, it's not, not on one hundredth, one hundredth isn't getting moved around at all.
Alexander is?
Well, Alexander's just going to come in and...
A joint, a joint driveway isn't ideal, but in this situation, if that's what it has to be, it's not.
Maybe we should put a round slot, I'm just totally kidding.
No, that's got to go in...
Trying to, like, maybe we should.
Right.
Just one more, when they, when they do put in that joint driveway, I think the developer should put it in and blacktop the shared portion. That way, one, one owner that wants to blacktop and the other one doesn't, they don't have a fight.
Right.
Blacktop that whole section. My kid lives on one, or his is blacktop, the neighbor isn't. It's always a pain, because he's got gravel coming out of his blacktop.
So, blacktop it up to the road right away, then?
Correct.
To where they split.
Where they split.
I think that's the only way I would accept it, otherwise I would not see...
All right, I'm going to write that down, blacktop, share the road.
Otherwise, I'd rather not have a joint driveway.
On lots...
I'd rather have a shorter separation.
Because you can't, because it's a collector road, so you can't shorten it.
Tell me that it truly is by the state statutes. Alexander is.
One hun, one hundredth is too.
Who said that?
The county?
The county. It's listed as a collector road.
You've got to be kidding me.
So, is McCutcheon?
Yeah, McCutcheon.
McCutcheon, yeah.
Where do you think it goes?
From Alexander.
No, all the way, one hundredth is the collector to get everybody in.
Try it on it, there ain't hardly anybody on that thing.
One more.
It's a little...
You are kidding.
There's more people going on one hundredth than you've seen lately.
Yeah, there's a lot of people.
They're taking it right out.
I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, it's very near, I'd take it when I drove up to my aunt and sent me that way. I take the hundreds a lot now.
They need to do something about hundreds, because it's way too narrow.
I just take a hundred to sixty.
So do I.
If I go under Richmond, that's the way I go.
He's coming up again.
I'm not joking, please. When I go up north, up up.
Right, so what have we got, a single use easement, uh, lake access between nine and ten, and...
Somewhere.
Somewhere.
With, with public road frontage.
Public road frontage. And paid to the split on the, on the shared driveway.
Just put on one and two, then we just need to identify what the pleasure is on thirteen and fourteen.
Well, I think we're talking about just a single access.
Right, lot four two needs frontage, joint driveway on one hundredth, lots one and two. That needs to be blacktopped to where it splits. Sixty-six foot lake access easement on one hundredth is gone. Um, public road frontage for lake access.
And we need a future town road to the west.
Yeah, future town road to the west.
And then I guess the only question on lot fourteen is, for a single flag lot like that, will you require a sixty-six foot wide strip for the driveway? Or something less adequate? See, these, these are the things that are going to be coming up, because the county is just defending it.
I don't have any problem with that being less. As long as that's not...
What does it say in our document?
As long as that's not the lake access.
We don't care, right, it doesn't have to be that.
You can do whatever you want on it, but they don't, they just prefer not to have an access, so if you don't have a width for a driveway.
Right, that's what I thought.
You know, and I would say split the difference, thirty-three feet is a good width. You can fit a driveway into thirty-three feet.
Right.
And then it doesn't take as much weight on lot thirteen.
If you can leave the distance between the driveways.
Yep, and we just need a hundred feet between the driveways, because it's not a, it's a local road. So, that shouldn't be an issue.
Do you have any idea of what they did on the barge? Where you come off of a barge off of Tanny and you head off the corner. Is a guy on the right that didn't, they put this really nice driveway, built the land up and everything that he never used, and he ran along the fence next to the neighbor's yard. Do you know what they ever did to create that driveway?
They made him close it off, and they had to come around and get the, on the other side, then once that...
Yeah, it messed up the driveway, the addresses in that one, those lots, too.
Yeah, it did. Do you know what they did with the land? I don't know what they did, because I went out to put the fire numbers up, and was like, "What, what is this?"
I don't remember, it's on the left.
And I told him he had to change his number then, because it didn't work.
Came off of the barge instead of McCutcheon.
No, it came off...
It was just on a...
Or off of Tanny, I mean.
It was on the other side of the...
Right.
But he still was off of the barge, but there was a house in between.
Yeah.
He can't do that.
So, do we have any other items tonight for this particular concept plan?
Did you hear everything I said?
Yes.
And you're good with those?
Yes.
Good, nothing else then? Good.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion on that then.
What's our clarification then on that lot fourteen?
I don't see.
Owned access with...
Lot fourteen, minimum thirty-three feet.
Yep, I'm just making sure, that's what I threw out there, but I don't know if you guys fully agree.
I would agree with it.
Okay, you'll get your copy and tie of these, this portion as well, so...
Well, I'll give them the minutes once I get it, and then I have to send it to the counties.
Exactly. All right. Has been a motion made. Do we hear a second to it?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I don't think we need to read, reread the motion, you've got all of that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Ty. Thank you. All right, next, on the agenda, set a date for the twenty twenty budget period.
So, look for the twelve to six P M, I'm twisting.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Okay, discussion and action on acquiring right of way on Kenny Road and Daly Road. I put this on because this did make it in time, we did the Lavarde shot. Road approval in our last meeting on September sixteen. This did make it in time to get that item. I think we're getting very lucky this time, we're opposed to McCutcheon. So, this is the law of the right of way, we recently acquired. And the county would like a motion for most of this.
I would move a approval for the temporary right of ways for Kenny Road.
And Daly, Kenny and Daly, you have two of them.
Okay, do I hear a second for that?
Second.
Second, any discussion? The only discussion I was at, the data loss, the county to move ahead with that act of the process. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion's carried. Okay, next, a discussion and action on road repairs. This is another item that did not make it in time to be on the agenda, uh, this date November twelfth. This is, this is something that really needs to be done with all the rain and continuing rain we have now. Just to add to the discussion that was gathered earlier tonight, I asked the county to put this writing to us, rather than just say, "Go up and take care of it." There's one up on Edgewood that's just like a gully washer, it's like the Grand Canyon. So, I'm requesting from the board tonight to approve the amount between thirty-five and forty-five hundred dollars for the offset disc to do the shoulders, need to bring in rip ramp. And I really think that's something that needs to be done yet this year. Should I hear a motion to approve that?
I just, I just want to, have you, have you looked at all these, just to make sure?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, one thing I don't like in the town is they use cold mix on the shoulder. You know, they go on shoulder with cold mix. To me, it may be better served even just using millings. I can add it, because what happens with that cold mix is, you see it, they put it on the edge, and then people just start driving on that, and then that's our great, and it just looks...
Obviously, well, I don't think there's going to be a lot of it. I think it's mainly the disking and the rip ramping that's, I mean, we've talked about that earlier in the year.
I agree with it, when they do our shoulder, they use nothing but that regrind. I don't why they would use cold mix.
No, that's what they used on that barge thing initially.
Mark wanted to know...
It held up your...
It holds up much better, because it still allows water to go through it. And they got a big pile over there.
It's just a... I mean, the roads don't look good when you get all that cold mix flowing out of the sides.
So, we're authorized, you want to authorize that to see what the difference is, and then if it's...
No.
Just, it'd be cheaper.
It should be cheaper, yeah.
It should be cheaper.
Right.
Okay.
I would move approval of it.
Okay, so I put that in your motion, move approval subject to...
Going to regrind.
Regrind as opposed to cold mix?
And I got another hole I'd like you to fix, that's on the corner of Sherman and Bear Drive. And I got another hole I'd like you to fix, that's on the corner of Sherman and Bear Drive. There's a big pond with about twelve inches of diameter, that's probably about eight inches deep.
Not to exceed what? Five thousand? That's a thirty-five to forty-five.
Not to exceed five thousand.
Does it exceed how much?
Five thousand.
Alright, Sherman and Bear, you said?
Sherman and Bear Drive.
Okay.
It's on the southwest corner.
Okay, any further discussion on this tonight?
I need a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion's carried. Okay. Brian's been here all night, I'm gonna move up Brian's... Oh, yeah, the patrol guy is here.
Yeah.
I didn't know you were from Osceola. Okay, then I'm not, sorry, Brian. Alright, discussion and action on animal control officer. So, I guess we have two for each of you.
Nice. Let Maggie read it.
So, Vicki, you want to set this up? I'll need a background, let me know what's, what you just wanted to call us. Are you the gentleman from Osceola?
This is Daryl.
Okay.
Kathy Pelner is retiring, and so we need to find animal control by January first.
Okay, did anyone invite Rip, who was recommended by Kathy Pelner?
Yeah, we tried.
We tried, and it took us until yesterday afternoon to even get it.
We talked to her numerous times.
I think it was three or four times.
Do you really want to come up and background us a little bit on what your motion is?
My...
I know I've met you, I know I've met you with Town Association, I know you're the owner of this one.
Correct. I'm an animal humane officer, animal control. I currently contract with, I believe it's eighteen or nineteen towns, in Polk County and St. Croix County. On my flyer that I have there, I answer my phone twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so you have full service. I do take care of the calls personally, I do have somebody that wants to get involved in this down here. She's a vet tech. But right now, I take care of these and I, no matter what time. If it's an after-hours call, i.e. dog, cat, whatever the situation is, I do take the animal back to my home. If that's acceptable by the board, until a holding facility is open, I believe you may contract with Woodbury.
We do.
Unless there's a, if I have the ability to drop it off there. I can drop it off there after hours.
Right, there is a key where you can drop it off.
Perfect, because a lot of the towns do not contract with Woodbury, so I bring the animals to my home. And typically, I find the owners within twelve hours anyway, so they never have to go to an intake.
And your intake or your holding would be in Osceola, would you take it back to your...
Correct, which is, when I say Osceola, I live just north of Star Prairie, just above the county line.
How long do you hold them for?
For what? What, typically, I have them, I bet ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the dogs are picked up within eight to twelve hours.
And what about the five to, three, three to five, two to five?
Any of those animals, they've gone because some of our, the towns use Dr. Bull in Star Prairie for their holding. And there's only been one that has ended up having to be adopted out where nobody claimed it.
I need to clarify something that I was told. And I want to ask you directly, because I don't like someone just telling me something and you saying, okay, they're telling you truth. I was told that after five, if you have them on your hand for five days, you euthanize animals. I want you to be able to clarify that, so that...
That who euthanizes them?
That you. I want you to be able to clarify that. Which is why I'm asking you, so you can clarify that.
Oh, I've never euthanized an animal. The only one, the only thing I've ever euthanized was a feral cat.
I euthanized that too, so...
But that's the only, no, I can tell you right now...
You need to know what you've said.
The Humane Society in Polk County, Arnel Humane Society, had a really bad rap when I started doing this six years ago. Where nobody would call about an animal running loose and stuff, because they said every time it's brought to Arnel, it's euthanized. I can tell you right now, each euthanization that has happened at Arnel is because the animal is unadoptable. Either from sickness or unapproachable, you know.
Dangerous.
Where they're vicious and dangerous.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, I wanted to ask you direct, I wanted to move this forward.
Yes, no, I was gonna say, I am, even with my size and everything, people will say, yeah, I'm intimidating or whatever. I have a little Bichon dog. No, I used to have a Shih Tzu. People think I must, I'm an animal lover, that's why I'm doing this. You know, like I said, one of the things that, you know, I don't have a retainer or anything, it's not about the money. It's about the animals and the people who lose them. That's all it's about.
No, I appreciate you answering that. Yeah, we're all talking about something. I wanted to know, I wanted to hear from you.
Oh!
I'm not gonna just listen to the texts on one side.
I was gonna say, you can go ahead, I used to work for the Sheriff's Department, you can ask them.
I'm agreeing.
My wife would probably euthanize me if I did.
Yeah. Exactly.
I'll tell you right now.
Okay, so, a question in terms of your fees, so, be twenty dollars an hour plus, you know, the IRS violation.
Correct.
And, you know, once you get it back to your home, is there like a warning?
Usually, what I do is, it doesn't even take a day. So, usually, the people, because then I make it a little bit easier for them, then I meet them halfway or whatever. And the towns that recently have contracted with me since I've been to the board meeting, they bill back to those homeowners for the calls, the amount of calls. And I inform the people that, you know, they're gonna charge you, I got my dog back and I didn't have to drive all the way to Woodbury. Or I got my dog back and I didn't have to drive to any other humane society that would have an opening.
And that's true, we do bill back for animal control, and they get, and they get billed from the humane society to pick the dog up at the humane society, so...
One thing, one thing we need to make sure of is that we don't lose our slot with Woodbury.
But if he wants to get it up, it's gone.
It's, that is correct. No, if you utilize it, I will utilize Woodbury.
Yeah, you'll get a key, we'll give it to you. Because we'll let them know, you'll have to just go up there and meet with them or whatever. We'll let them know.
And you don't want to start taking them to anywhere else if we lose that.
There's not a retainer complicated with very, is there?
No.
So, you know, if, for example, he took it to his home and, you know, the animal happened to be boarded there for ten hours.
Right.
In the meantime, you know, eighty percent of them are picked up.
Right, I think the issue is, that's why I want to discuss this as well, I think the issue is, all of these are pass-throughs.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether it's twenty dollars an hour or two thousand dollars an hour, passing back to the people. I do have a question though, which is, which is a concern from having Kathy Pelner do it all these years, we know the level of service she's had. I've been told that a majority or a lot of these come from people that are picked up for drunk driving, or picked up for speeding, and they have a pet.
Which ones?
The pets that we've had.
Oh!
Right, so it's not just a stray animal.
Yep.
So, just real quickly, so if someone sees a dog running down the road, you wouldn't, we wouldn't call you for that. You'd have, someone would have already caught that animal, then you'd come and pick it up, is that your understanding as well?
Well, it depends. I just dealt with a situation on Highway Eight where the dog was out on the side of the highway for a week. And it was unable to be caught, but it was causing a traffic and safety hazard. To where I had to basically set a live trap and watch it because somebody tried to steal the live trap on the side of Highway Eight.
Of course, of course they did.
But I sat, and then I had to actually catch it with a catch pole. And what it was, was a dumb dog, but it kept coming out onto Highway Eight. Otherwise, no, I tell the people, if you can get them in a garage, get them in a crate, get them on a leash. I don't go on wild goose chases because I have better things to do.
Well, the reason I ask that is, is the other proposal breaks it down between daytime pickup and nighttime pickup. Looks like you do not differentiate on that.
No, it's the same charge, holidays, weekends, nights.
Okay, then I'm gonna ask you another question with respect to your contract. It says the animal controlling humane officer will endeavor to respond to all calls as soon as practical, practicable, and will respond within forty-eight hours. And all phone calls received from residents will be returned within twenty-four hours. I'm raising that because we know, we know historically, we've had about thirty-five dogs, five cats or whatever over time. And like I said, a lot of those have already been caught, or, I'm using this example for the reason, you know, if there's a person, hey, DUI, get out here at two in the morning, and take it, tow it in the car, pick up the dog. How do you square that with what your proposal is?
The reason why that is put in there is, most of it is to cover me, because a lot of the towns, when I say I have eighteen towns, oh my gosh, you're not gonna be able to fit us in. I said, and I think that's the Martel contract?
Yes.
Their attorney actually, I think, wrote that part in there. So, that way they could, because the people came to the meeting, and they're like, he's gonna answer your call, it might not be immediately, but it's gonna be within twenty-four hours. I think they threw that in there, I'm gonna call them back, but if it comes to a situation where I have dog bites, or, you know, I had a dog bite, the dog took off, and however it works, an investigation is gonna break over somebody's dog's marking.
I was wanting to make sure we talked about it, now's the time, so...
Right, yes, no, I actually...
Martel is great, but we've got about eighty-seven hundred people here, so...
Right.
My other question is, Osceola's a plus or minus thirty miles away, just from, be driving up there a lot. So, you're, how many miles are you away from here? If you're north of Star Prairie?
Twenty-three, I think it was.
I think so.
Twenty-three?
Yep. A lot closer than the town of Martel. Or Baldwin, or...
So, I have a question, Mrs. Smith called and said there's a dog running around the neighborhood. What's our response? Catch it or don't worry about it? And honestly, sometimes I think that probably should have been the case more often than not, because I remember looking at several of Kathy Pelner's, try run, ran out there and they couldn't find any dog that was at large. And it might, it might have been somebody's dog that ran off in the neighborhood and then went home half an hour later. And there isn't any dog.
And I'll tell you right now, one of the things, I do have a construction business also. I have four daughters. Um...
They run away sometimes.
Whatever. But anyway, I'm not going out there for...
Yes, right.
I'm not gonna, I, I'm sorry, I'm in decent shape and stuff, but I can't chase down a dog. And there's no reason, you know, if it becomes a nuisance or a problem, we can always set up a live trap or whatever. But otherwise, if it's just sighted, I had two dogs chasing deer through the yard. Okay, well, thank you, take notes or whatever, if they come back and they're sitting at your doorstep, you know, give them some hot dogs and put them in your garage, and I'll come get them.
Okay, so, any other questions that you have? Was, was in your contract, I'm just asking this because it makes it much easier to gauge you.
Yep.
It says that either party may discontinue this appointment by agreement, giving no less than thirty days written notice. And I don't expect that, I mean, there's a real prospect to test this, see how it goes.
I'll tell you, I've had, in my six years, I started out with five towns. Since last August, when I went to the association's meeting, I think I signed up half of St. Croix County. I've never been called in back in front of a, into the office for any reason regarding my job duty.
I talked to Jim Harris at the town of Baldwin, he said they just renewed his contract again. Everything's been going very well, he keeps very good records, which is Jim Harris' big beef because of the whole lawsuit that's going on.
Ooh, what lawsuit?
Some guy picked up a dog, took it home, but it didn't belong there, and he killed off chickens.
Oh, that's in the town of, that, they were the first one in St. Croix County that contracted with it. That's been going on for two weeks.
Yeah, so, like, you know, T said the big deal was that you're gonna be an officer for one, you know, certified and records have been great, less than any problems, you've returned all his calls, you know, and done whatever he's asked of you.
Sent a proposal over within fifteen minutes of the phone call.
Yes, everything's been done very timely.
You're doing it in three weeks?
Talked to Jamie, or Jackie Mitchell in the town of Aaron Burry, those are the only two that I got ahold of, I tried to call everybody else, but she, again, said everything as well, so, nobody else called me back, so that's all I got.
So, liability insurance?
Yes.
Well, yeah, no.
Yes, except if you have additional contributory, which some of the towns do have on their own. Town of Richmond's covers for me to deal with lions, tigers, so on, and they pay for that part of the policy themselves.
We don't have that.
Correct, otherwise, what it is, is it's split up and divided evenly between all of the towns.
Yeah, and I think Jim Harris said it was fifty-seven dollars this year or something, so the cost is an extra fifty-seven dollars on top of this contract.
So, I want to make a motion to accept, accept the contract. There's a caveat to my motion, though. I want to make a motion to accept Carol Paul's contract for, as a certified animal humane officer in animal control. However, I would like the ability to review, across how it's going at ninety days, and then again at six months. And then at your point, we choose to create a, you know, with the ability to, if it's not working out, you know, if we're getting complaints, what have you, we get to revisit it. And then obviously, if everything's good, we can choose to renew it here. It's a really complex, messed up motion, I'm going to restate it now, just because I wanted to have some understanding. So, I'll make a, I'm gonna restate, say I made a motion to approve Carol Paul's certified animal humane officer and the animal control contract with a ninety-day review, a six-month review, and then up for, and an annual, yes.
When I add in some question to your motion, that we, if your motion was that we entered into a contract with...
Sure.
Because this is, this is Pierce County and Martel, I think we should have our own.
We have our own.
Yeah, we have our own right here.
We have our own. It's the exact same one, we just had the old ones, and then we redid our own.
But that's fine, enter into a contract.
Second.
Further discussion?
Is it customary to, on a closed session for something like this, or is it...
No, not this.
Because he's not employed.
Not employed.
Not tracked, and we need to take care of our dogs, cats. Do you have any other questions?
You guys want to sign it? And then he can...
Do you have a motion made?
We'll have you sign it, and then he'll sign it, and then we'll have everything.
This goes, well, let me, the motion first, first.
The one question I have is, so with that, is that something that you're gonna review, and you're gonna tell me a thumbs up, thumbs down, or do I have...
As a board.
I agree, the town board should, you don't have to be, shouldn't.
Well, that's why I'm just making sure, so if I don't hear from you, everything's good.
Right, like it's all, and we're getting twenty complaints, we have an opportunity to say, hey, you know, this isn't working out, but you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
I just want to go into a year, annual contract bond.
Well, I think it's understandable, Kathy's been doing stuff for thirty-seven years, it's a new issue for us.
There's no way, there's thirty days, notice anytime.
Right.
Right. No, this contract doesn't have its nine years, eight years, six months.
No.
So, why would I sign that tonight?
Because it's part of the motion that you're gonna review, you're still gonna, you're still gonna do the thirty-day separation.
I know, but you have a date for me to sign to that, I just think we should have a revised...
No, it doesn't need to be...
No, it's not in the contract.
Our board is gonna be...
It's our choice, it's not part of the...
You're not putting it in the contract?
No.
Okay.
Because it's not part of the contract.
That was signed, and then you signed it on your...
I was going for a couple minutes.
It's like my form of an additional use permit on him.
Okay. The motion made, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
Sorry to interrupt you.
He signed it, did I get your... I'll get a copy for you real quick, and I got the rest of this for you.
Okay, and then...
It starts until January first.
Yep.
Here, Chris.
Perfect.
Give me two seconds.
Have you signed it and make copies?
Okay. We're really going for your...
One second. No, everybody gets my card, though.
At least one.
Yep. Yep.
And then we will call you, um, we'll talk to the main society or whatever and figure out, and then we'll let you know so that you'll have your keys and stuff prior to starting January first.
Okay, now I think I can safely move this up, so. Bryce, you want to share with us what you have?
So it's a couple of different things. Uh, one of them was, was prompted by the state changing their laws.
Yay.
Uh, so January first, I have to have a master electrician on staff, which I already have, uh, to do commercial and agricultural electrical inspections. The little caveat that they've never done before is that the towns have to become an electrical inspection agency. It's very convoluted. I don't know why they did it. They've never done it before, but they did it this time. It's been coming down the pipe for years and they're finding out a deadline of January first, 2020. So I'm asking the town board to become an electrical inspection agency and then adopt a new ordinance, adopting chapter SBS three sixteen in its entirety, which now includes this commercial and ag inspection separate. They separated it out. It was all one before, but now it's separated out. And, uh, that's the new thing, so. And then once you get your agency license, then we give them the ordinance and in that ordinance, uh, along with the ordinance, you give them my information and my electrical inspector's information. And then the other one is the delegated municipality. And the state building inspector that we have, uh, that covers about twelve counties, uh, came around to all the clerks, do you remember how long ago that was? A year or two ago? Uh, asking the municipalities to become delegated. I've always pushed back because I didn't want to do the plan reviews on commercial buildings. I just don't have the time. And so now they've created a new delegated municipality category where the state will still do the plan review, but not the inspection. And so as, and there's different boxes to check and I checked the box that says inspection only, no plan review. I've been doing the plan, the inspections for twenty-three, twenty-four years already. This will, uh, give him more time to go elsewhere where they don't have a building inspector instead of spending any time in the town and having the contractors double up on calls, uh, things like that, so.
So first, quick questions from the board. Is everything in this package, right?
Did you get the latest electrical, the, uh?
This one?
The ordinance to adopt SBS three sixteen? Yes, that's the, that's the newest piece. I didn't know you got that.
This, so this is something we didn't.
You can do it all tonight, but I'll work with Vicky on doing it in the right order towards the state.
Okay.
We have to get the inspection agency license first before we can send them the ordinance for the electric. We can do the delegated one right away.
So I guess that would be my question, so. Just so we.
We should separate it. You can, you can, you can do them all at once if you want, but.
No, we're gonna make motions on each one.
That's fine.
Right, so.
So we need to adopt the electrical inspection ordinance.
Yep.
Okay, is that this one?
Right.
So that's the second one.
Right.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion to carry. Okay, that's this one.
And then this is the other one, right? The application for.
Electrical inspection agency.
For delegated municipality authority.
Okay, that's the delegated, okay.
Okay, application for municipal, application for delegated municipality authority.
So. So you're a second to that. Okay, and that's the one to do commercial inspections, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion to carry. Okay, then we have discussion and action on the town becoming an electrical inspection agency.
To authorize a town to be an electrical inspection agency? Is that how it's, right? Well, that's what, am I going to send over or whatever? I just want to be sure that's what I have.
We don't have anything for that per se. It's just you're accepting that position, correct?
Oh, no, there, there's an application we have to fill out.
This thing, is it?
There's, there's an ordinance and then there's an application.
Although there's gotta be stuff in there.
I think we're missing something.
No, you're not. I can give you a big packet of stuff. I didn't know what was what. I just put it all together.
We're all this thing together, so this can have what we need.
Yeah, right there.
Yes, it's just an application.
Okay, and that, that would be the threshold for action on the town becoming electrical inspection agency if we pass that. And there's further, further work we need to do to fill that in completely, correct, or is it ready?
Yeah, I mean, we have to fill it out and apply.
Yeah.
To the state.
And just so I'm clear, we means you and Vicky or?
Yeah, Vicky. You're, you're going to approve that and then the town, Vicky on the town's behalf will make the application.
That's a four-year term.
So we would want a motion to approve the application for inspection agency registration.
So, you're a second to that. Put a second, motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have just a question here. So, um, this again, it's required by statute that Hudson apply or?
Every municipality, every municipality. If you don't, what will happen is they will send this out for bid and you'll end up with somebody you will never hear of. You answered my question.
I get it. And is there a deadline on when that has to be?
January first. We have to have all this done. The new law takes effect January first.
Is that something the chair needs to sign before it goes out? Do you remember?
Uh, I think the clerk can sign it. It's just an application, okay.
All right. It's been a motion, second, and discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion to carry. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thanks for sitting here all night.
I'll work with Vicky. Just help pull that up.
Yeah, y'all have to come over with it.
I've got it, y'all.
You do it and then bring it over to me.
Then you can sign it. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, discussion in action with city Hudson, the possible sale of the ambulance.
Ambulances.
So they're selling, but now supposedly they're, Lakeview's not buying. So I don't know. They're gonna put them up for auction is the last we heard. We don't really know what they're gonna do, but considering that.
Whatever they're gonna sell for, we'd like our share.
We would like, since the city only paid forty-nine percent of the bill, I think the other fifty-one percent should be. So you guys have the letter, but I think, uh, there should be something in there regarding the chase vehicles. Did we discuss that? At least, at least one of them.
The one going to the police department, fire department. All municipalities are using the fire department.
They don't even need another vehicle if I'm ever. It's ridiculous, but whatever. Yeah, I know. I was, I was the one that hadn't given up.
Yeah, but now they have more.
And we agreed to it, the fire.
Yeah, but they have more part-time or full-time people now too, doing inspections and all that, so it makes sense to have a smaller vehicle type than driving around and.
Vicky asked me to put together a draft letter which is in your packet. Any suggestions, changes to that at all?
Well, it's on eighteen, behind number eighteen.
I'd put something to, put out some markers for us and not be too, too. Something we could read and see quickly or?
Right here.
I didn't have it.
Claire, everyone's in the audience. Why don't you read it quickly?
It's come to our attention that the city Hudson may be contemplating the sale of, contemplating the sale of existing two ambulances, but it should be three ambulances.
And a chase car, huh?
Two Lakeview medical, we don't want that. The sale of, of the existing three ambulances. And then I don't know how we're gonna put in about the police car or whatever. But as you know, there are prior contracts with surrounding municipalities whereby the cost sharing for both capital and personal costs. We believe the city of Hudson's funding portion for the, for these equipment and personnel costs was approximately forty-nine percent and the village of North Hudson, Town of Troy and Town of Hudson made up the remaining funding. We would respectfully ask that if a sale is finalized for this equipment, that the town of Hudson would receive a portion of those proceeds based on the historical portion of our contributions over the years. Thank you for your attention to this request.
Is that new to you? I'm sorry, is it not about, are we like, we have a twelve percent or fifteen?
Oh, no, we've, uh, we know what it is, but I don't, I don't remember. I just know that the city is forty-nine percent because that's always been the big beef is they used seventy-four percent of the ambulance, but only paid forty-nine.
Yeah.
So.
So they might get a letter from the other participants too.
But so I don't know how, where do you want this one chase car for, that went to the police department? I mean, we should get credit for that. I mean, the police doesn't, the police don't work for us.
But it's not only that. I don't know if the Lucases and everything else is all going with the ambulances. What about all the rest of the drugs?
Oh, that's like probably all gone. They have.
They're, they're taking inventory of whatever is remaining of the EMS.
Most of the stuff went in the dumpster. The rest of the stuff went to City Hall.
Drugs.
No.
No, I'm just saying all of the EMS stuff, they were like cleaning out and.
Yeah, that's true. But my point of that is.
They can't just chuck crap in the dumpster and.
They did. I, well, it's.
Well, you know what? We're gonna charge them for that too. They dumped crap in the dumpster. What'd you dump in the dumpster? You owe us a quarter of it or whatever it should be. It's ridiculous.
Once they do an inventory and what is there prior to disbanding, we'd like credit for all of the inventory.
I would say we want credit for the two ambulances, the chase cars.
Three ambulances.
Sorry, yeah, excuse me. The three ambulances, the one chase cars, since you guys are all about the fire burn. And an extra fifteen thousand dollars for crap they dumped in the dumpster. Yeah, you can.
You don't know what?
We would, okay.
That's why I'm asking for fifteen thousand dollars. It could have been a lot of dollars thrown. I mean, nice.
What do you want? We would also like what?
Stuff that's expensive or whatever.
An extra fifteen thousand dollars.
No, for the chase vehicle. How do we put that? We would also like.
The chase vehicle that went to the fire department since all municipalities are sharing in there.
It is a number.
But the one that went to the police department.
We get or trade in credit.
They're not gonna tell us what they threw in the dumpster.
The value of that, the remaining.
Right.
The chase vehicle that went to the Hudson Police Department.
Well, they're gonna sell. The chase vehicle.
We would also like credit for chase vehicle that went to the Hudson Police Department.
They're gonna, they're selling.
We don't dig on the fire.
I'll put it between the first and second paragraph there.
So don't take my respectfully out there. Still need to work with the city.
Well, I'm, I'm, no, I, I'm not going to, but I.
Then you have a question?
I was just, I was just wondering, has it been decided, is there any refund to the town for this twenty nineteen that we paid them?
Oh, no. We're not getting a dime.
We need to suck that right down the tube.
They said that was to pay for the employees.
And then we probably did pay for it for that two months. It's still that. We paid for it.
I, I could, I could share with the people in the audience, all I'm doing is, is a stenographer passing it on. The, the, the city's position was, is that the town came to them, that we had a five-year contract, we asked to get out of the five-year contract. If they wouldn't let us out, we're still gonna go to Lakeview and pay it. And so, but I think, I think we're good stewards. I think we should send the letter and see.
They, they on contract with Lakeview.
No, here's the deal. We, we were, they didn't have a choice but to let us out.
Right, because they were breach of contract.
Correct.
But like everyone should like.
Okay, so, so I don't.
What else? So you said the equipment too, so there.
Yeah, the buses and I would assume that structures and all that would go with the ambulance. The D-FIBs and the structure, but the radios were. In any inventory that's left that has a value, we would like our percentage.
Because I believe they're taking inventory of like the computers and anything else.
Yeah.
And, and we want to see the inventory. We don't want to just be given a percentage. I mean, we want to see the.
The inventory, yeah.
I don't care if they hope all, if they hope all the entire list, but I want us to put it.
So we would also like, we would also.
I was on my side screwing you over. You should have, yeah.
We would also like credit for the chase vehicle that went to Hudson Police Department and all the other remaining inventories such as Lucas, computers, et cetera.
Yes.
We're broke, man. I have money to build a road.
Yes.
So we're, we're still asking for the value of it.
Well, right. I mean, they need to.
They're into this the way it was worded. I'm afraid of wordsmith.
Well, okay, so you don't want credit, you want what?
Used computer that's sitting in the, out of.
You want that Michael man from nineteen seventy-five?
What?
Portion of cash value?
Yeah, because if it does go to auction, we're gonna be arguing over.
Portion. Cash value. All right, so I'll have to retype this and.
If the board were allowed to retype it, just let me look at it once more before I say.
I don't.
Okay, hang on a minute. I need a motion to approve sending the letter to the city as presented.
I would make a motion to send the letter to the city as presented.
Yeah.
Don't.
You have some questions?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. We had a question?
Yeah, um, lots of twenty nineteen that loses points. So the city is out of the contract or out of the EMS service, right? So it went to Lakeview, right?
Yes.
So if, if a contract didn't exist through twenty nineteen, shouldn't you be refunded?
I agree.
That balance of the money?
Yes, I agree.
They exited the contract.
Why are you saying? I agree with you.
Because what we agreed to.
Right, but we agreed to it with the assumption that they're gonna complete the twenty nineteen year and they finished.
They didn't finish the year, that's the assumption.
Right, they didn't complete the twenty nineteen year, which means.
Hundred and forty-eight thousand. So October, November, December, well, September, it's, yeah, four months. It's a third of it, so.
I mean, that's, that's not right.
Contract is a contract.
They were in breach.
They were in breach of contract.
But it was, it was an agreement to allow us out.
Right, to, the agreement was that we would continue to pay for the employees, essentially, our money would pay for the employment essentially.
It was, but it was an agreement to allow us out to pay the fees that we would have normally paid for twenty nineteen.
Correct, but we only have to, we shouldn't have to pay for a hundred percent of twenty nineteen when only two-thirds of it was used.
But they gave us a dollar.
It was, no, it was the exact same contract. It was our.
Same what we were gonna pay no matter what.
I could see if they.
It wasn't a different amount. It was our contract.
I could see if they stayed in.
Right, if they stayed in, then they did pay.
If they finished the year, right, then I could.
Well, they answered for that.
Then they're part of the class and, you know, I can see though they'd be high. They didn't.
That's a separate.
All right, so you want a letter for that too?
Yeah, well, North Hudson and Troy should be under the same circumstances. Right, but that's their boards to figure out.
No, that's different. They didn't get out early.
No, but they still paid for.
They paid for, well, you know, we've all paid. That's the problem.
But that's North Hudson and Troy's problem.
Yes, yeah, everybody, they're all asking for their money back too. So you want another letter than?
Yeah. I'm not playing nice with this. Like, forget that.
Well, I think they should have to account for it in the fact if they want to show what their expenses were for the full year and how that relates to the contract amount that they collected.
I mean, asking for.
A third, the difference, the difference. A third, the difference, the difference. Pro, prorate us the difference of what was in, what days were not.
For the prorated
Prorated during
Yeah, for the contract, if you wanted that 2019, because the city of Hudson was not part of the contract.
Right, right.
Bite up 140,000 by month, 12 months.
To, to
Or by day, I don't care.
Whatever you want.
Does that make we're gonna get it?
So you want a letter asking for the prorated contract for 2019 in which the city was not
And what if we don't get it?
And what'd they do with the money?
General fine.
Yeah, probably. They were getting it.
This will The city was not what?
Under contract.
They can't just take the money and stick it in their own funds.
Under contract was super
Well, the
No, they can't
The compensation that they may have given the employees for the rest of the year and for the buyout and for the time that they served
They might have given severance, so it's not carrying
It may fall down to nothing or pretty close to
Go ahead and hear whether they did or didn't.
They didn't, they gave them severance.
They were supposed to pay them till the end of the year.
If they gave them the severance, there'd be a line item in the budget that shows that and then everything's settled.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They should have to show their expenses versus their incomes.
All right, so I'll get that one ready too and then, so that's part of this whole motion to send these letters.
Same motion, and so we'll get the look at it.
Yes, I'll type them and then you'll have to fix them and sign them.
Because you know where this is gonna end. I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna do what they have to do. I'm just being real open. The serial pin underneath the bus says Pennsyl. Okay.
You have a motion and a discussion?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, discussion and action on replacing the Hudson air conditioner.
Which one do you recommend, sir? Um, so we got three, one from River Falls Heating, one from Option 1 Mechanical, and one from Pete Green of Modern Heating Air. So the two, Option 1 was way over. It was a little different equipment. He put in a preventive maintenance, a one-year preventive maintenance program with four filter changes. I don't see the value in that. Like, I don't know if we're doing it now, but I don't see the value in that. River Falls Heating, I think which puts us on River Falls and Modern. They're right in there. The one thing that wasn't in your package is River Falls Heating, Dave Murphy, in my email, I can show you guys that, I'm gonna print it off, I got it. He'll throw a 3% discount if it's done in 2019. So that's another $208.50 off his bid, which would make it 674150.
That's the River Falls one?
That's the River Falls one.
Let's say they get 6740?
674150 could be the total on that. Minus the 3% discount if it's done this year.
How does that, how does this one compare with Modern Heating and Air? Unless I'm looking at this like
They use a little different equipment.
Yeah.
Dave uses the River Falls Heating uses 70,000 BTU.
Should have the same sear standard or something.
He's got a higher sear, so he's got a lower tonnage with a higher sear, which is gonna be more energy efficient. The higher the sear, the more energy efficient it is. So Modern, Modern's
Modern's
Modern's is 13 sear.
Yeah.
And River Falls is 14.25 sear. So you're getting another sear out of it. It makes it more, it makes it run more efficient.
No, but I'm saying like, to me, River Falls looks like the, the better
It is the better.
Oh, because I thought you said they were
They were, in the beginning, they were very equivalent. You know, even Modern's was a little lower. But this is 3% discount lowers it. The other thing I seen here too is Honeywell T4 thermostat. It's only like a 60 kilo thermostat. I was gonna see if we could upgrade it, because we had that approved for those three really stats. Take that out, maybe delete the discount that a little part of it, it'd be like 60 bucks. I looked it up, it was like a 60 kilo thermostat.
So what's part two and three of Modern's bid? I guess that's where I'm confused.
Parts two and three?
Yeah, the 5700 and the 1700.
That is, that is using So I wanted to get the bids and to get them kind of all kind of the same, get them all the same.
Yeah.
Get them all the same equipment. I requested Blaxx equipment, which I work with, and it's got a good, it's a good name. It's good equipment. He listed some train equipment, which is called Payne. It's not train, it's Train Ameri- or Ameristar. It's a cheaper brand, basically.
Also, he gave us two different
And then the other one, the 1700 at the bottom, is for if we wanted to run annuity and slave line set, which we don't need to do. The line set is what runs from the air conditioning to the furnace, the heat line on the furnace. And it's buried in walls, and it would need to be
It'd cause a lot of damage.
Cause a lot of damage that would need to be repaired.
So we're looking at the top number for
So the 1700 you disregard, you're looking at the top number.
Okay, which is 6930.
6930, yeah. So
Well, we don't have it in the budget for this year, so what
We do, we do.
Oh, we only have one in the budget, not two.
We have two in the budget. We have 15,000 dollars.
We're only doing one, and for, we're only doing the one, we have one right now with the condenser that is out, that's junk. It needs a bunch of parts and it's, the mice have peed all over it. It's junk. So that one, with that furnace, which is about 25 years old, untold.
Very tiny core.
It just makes sense just to replace it and probably do that other one in a few, few more years down the road.
Can they replace that this time of year?
Yes.
The AC?
Yes, yes. Yep, like your mice are tired.
You wait until the next meeting. Yeah, like, chill.
Well, cause like 153, they can't test it to run it this way.
Ken, what do you recommend?
I recommend River Falls Heating bid, definitely. Um, I put in for some more that were in Hudson Township, and one, he said he was gonna stop there, he never showed up, and
Am I missing something? Peter Green even put a number in here?
Yes, the back page.
Yeah, that's what it was a little
Oh, the back page. So he's Modern Heating Air.
Yeah, I was looking at his email when I was looking for their name.
Okay.
So there's the logo up top.
All right, well, not to slow us down, but it is 10 to 9. We've talked about this, it isn't a budget. The one that we have in here is beyond decrepit, so I think we could get a two for heating and cooling. So is there any further discussion on this item? Do you have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to replace the heating and AC in our town hall and give the River Falls Heating
At a cost of 674150.
At a cost of 674150.
With giving you the ability to potentially
Well, this is the cost, and then if he gets something and gets it lower, that's fine, but this is
No, I, no, I say that for discussion. A motion is second. I'd like to put in a discussion for a motion, but that's a discussion. Okay, any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
I don't have a question. So are we gonna, we, this one gives us the lower thermostat, right? You were talking about the $60. You wanted to upgrade that thermostat?
They would. There's a, I'd like to upgrade the thermostats a little bit. That is just a, it's a night setback thermostat, but it's just a
So how much did
Well, we already authorized thermostats.
Yeah, we already authorized the thermostats. Exactly.
Last month. Oh, that's right, you're changing them up.
Yeah.
I was gonna say that we need to authorize more.
So I know they have two thermostats the same, but have
Yep.
One for these.
I'm good.
Any other questions?
Just a, just a quick question. So just in terms of the detail, I would expect that River Falls also provides the five-year and one-year warranties and stuff like that, because I think that's standard.
It's all the same words, same warranty, so
Yeah, and you're otherwise, you're comfortable that, you know, in terms of, you know, the very, all of the connecting parts and everything like that, they're all good, I would think so.
I think, I think it should be, yeah. You know, short of like having to replace the line set for some reason, that would be a full, that'd be enough then. They're all pretty confident that they can clean out the line set.
So I'll just scan this and email it to you then, or do you want to copy it right now, or how do you want to do this?
Okay, let's float out it real quick. A motion is second. Any further discussion?